Good evening.
Good evening.
We'll start off tonight with a prayer and a pledge. I'll be doing the pledge and one of my council persons will be doing the prayer. Which one? We'll have Councilman Copeland.
If you would like to participate, you can bow your heads. Gracious Father, we thank you for the day. We thank you for this opportunity again for us to come together as city council, as citizens, to work towards a greater tomorrow. Father, we ask of God that you give us wisdom, insight, and knowledge as we go throughout the agenda, as we hear from our community, that we will have open ears to hear, that we will be quick to hear, slow to speak, and slow to wrath. Father, we thank you for another opportunity for the democracy that we have, to sit with one another, to hear each other out, and to work towards a greater tomorrow. We ask of God for wisdom for each council member as we go about our agenda, that you will, we will make the best decisions for our city to see a greater tomorrow. It's a new season, it's a new day, a fresh north is coming our way. So Lord, we give you all glory, honor, and praise in Christ's name, amen.
Amen. Our pledge allegiance to the Constitution of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Again, good evening.
Good evening.
This is a public meeting, and the audience is asked to refrain from booing, clapping, excessive behavior. I need to remind all of my colleagues, I see them pulling them out, I need those phones on vibrate, please. Audience, I still need a new phone, so I need yours on vibrate as well. Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Councilmember Lamar Sylvia.
Present.
Councilmember Williams is excused. Councilmember.
Present.
Mayor Pro temp balls.
Present.
Councilmember Scherzer.
Present.
Councilmember Ostache.
Present.
Councilmember Flores.
Present.
Councilmember Copeland.
Present.
Mayor Moore.
Present.
We have eight members present, one excused.
Thank you. We're going to go to announcements.
I have no announcements. Did you want to, the audience rules?
Well, I did. I welcomed the audience.
Oh, okay.
I welcomed the audience. I'm sorry, but let me welcome you again and tell you it's always so good to have everybody here. And so, remember, no clapping, booing, excessive behavior, and please silence the cell phones.
Okay, well, with that, we are now at public input.
I'd like to welcome everyone who came to speak tonight, that have signed up to address us. Please speak slowly and clearly so we don't miss what you're trying to say. You will be called to the podium by the clerk, who will also be timing you. You have three minutes. You have three minutes. Please get your important information in so that we can get it to, so that it will go to the property department and we can respond there, therefore, back to you on what your topic is about. Madam Clerk.
Our first speaker tonight is Alex Clark.
Hello, everybody. My name is Alex Clark, and I'm running for Delta College trustee. I wanted to come in and introduce myself and give you a little bit of information as to why I'm running for this position. When I finished high school, I went to Northwood University, and like many students do, I took out student loans to help pay for college. When I left Northwood, I racked up $100,000 in student loan debt. This got me to realize that like many students, I had been told, "Don't worry, take out student loans, you'll pay it back eventually." But they don't tell these students that that eventually day does come. And they don't tell students that the debt can take upwards of 20% to 40% of their net income every single month. This is crippling young people to where they can't afford to buy homes, vehicles, give back to our community, and be an asset to our community. For the last four years, I've been the finance manager at Garber Chrysler on Bay Road, where every day I see the effects that this has in our community and with young people. And I've had the conversations about how it impacts their livelihoods. Ever since I have left college, I have worked hard to educate high school students that not everybody has to go to a four-year university, that there are other avenues. They can go to Delta, for instance, for two to three years, and transfer to someplace like Northwood or Saginaw Valley, and pay only a fraction of the cost. Or they can go through the skilled trades program and obtain a good paying job in that field, or they can also just get a two-year degree and leave and get a great paying job. Too often, there's a stigma attached to our skilled trades, which has helped to contribute to the lack of workforce in these areas in our region. These are great paying jobs that we should be talking about more often. Right now, we're seeing costs of college climbing, along with the interest rates soaring to heights that we haven't seen in a long time. If elected, I want to look for ways to keep Delta College affordable, so that everyone in the community that wants to attend has the ability to, without crippling themselves financially. I want to increase the accessibility to the college by partnering with our state and federally elected officials to come up with better public transportation options, to help get students from the out county and the cities to Delta College. My campaign is focused on issues that our families and our community are talking about every day. When I started this campaign, I did make a promise that if I was going to serve, that it would be with bipartisan support across all three counties. And this trustee position is not about Republican or Democrat partisanship, it's about doing what's best for the students of Delta College and ensuring that Delta remains a jewel in our community. I'm honored to say that I've been fulfilling that promise with support from leaders like Senator Ken Horn, Representative Amos O'Neal, Mayor Moore, and Dick Garber, along with a few of you in the room today. We all pay taxes to fund Delta, and I firmly believe that you should be updated by the trustees on how things are going at the college and get input from you. That's why if elected, I'm making a commitment to attend every single city council and township board meeting at least one per, once per year, to give those updates. In the last four months of campaigning, I've had the, thank you.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Haven't been here in a while, so, my name is Debbie Melkonian. I'm the president of the Adams Boulevard Neighborhood Association. I live at 2116 Adams Boulevard. My topic tonight, I know it says speed bumps. The question is, why can't we have speed bumps, or speed humps, that's what it's called? I know they exist in the township, in Flint, and in Detroit. I don't know if it's just the cost, or the fact that people aren't aware of them, and they can wreck their car, or whatever. But I'm sure if there's a signage up that says speed bumps, it would make the driver aware that the bump is coming, and hopefully slow down the traffic, which is desperately needed throughout the city, not just Adams Boulevard. My next point are the mini bikes. I know people are complaining all the time. I know the police are working hard at trying to catch these kids or young adults on the mini bikes. Once they are caught, are they given a ticket? Are they given a warning? Is the bike taken away? Several questions. Why can't there be an ordinance, a city ordinance, just like we have for mopeds from the city council? They're becoming a bigger problem than ever. My next quest or statement is about parking enforcement. How many parking enforcement employees are there? What are their hours? I think if the people that are doing this job work during the evening throughout the city, they could be ticketing enough people that it would pay their salary, or even possibly add an additional parking enforcement person. How many of the council members listen to the, or read about Nextdoor? Excuse me, I think just about every neighborhood is on the Nextdoor, well, I don't call it a Facebook, but comments. The comments are a variety of things. Mini bikes, theft, speed bumps, I'm sorry, speeding, all those things are talked about in the Nextdoor. I advise you, if you haven't been on it, or seen it, or opened it, to take a look at Can the state police or the sheriff's department issue tickets? That's my question.
A motion to extend the speaker's time for.
I don't have much more to say.
A minute, thirty seconds then.
Oh.
Second.
Thirty seconds?
Thirty seconds.
All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay, Debbie. To finish my thought, can the sheriff's department or the state police issue tickets? Or are they just doing the warnings? And my final question is, who put up all the signs that say, "Pray for Saginaw"? I've seen them around, and I was just wondering where they came from. So, thank you very much, appreciate your time, and look forward to hearing from you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Hurley Coleman III.
Good evening to our mayor, Brendan Moore, Mayor Pro temp, Michael Balls, city manager, city council members, and all those who are in attendance tonight and listening online. I bring you greetings from Saginaw County Community Action Committee, where I serve as the executive director for the agency. Our agency has been changing lives since 1965 and helping to create self-sufficient citizens in Saginaw County. Our agency is one of 30 in the state of Michigan, and one of 1,000 in America. I wanted to address city council tonight to talk about the work that we've done in the city, partnering with the Michigan Department of Natural Resources, to operate a summer youth program called Leadership Exploration Development, short for LEED. The program coordinator is Erica Newman, and her assistant was Mr. Willie Alexander. A group of high school-age students competed for a chance to get into this leadership program, to perform jobs that would promote the initiatives of the DNR. They worked in the city parks, county parks, state parks, and then went on field trips to different state parks, participating in job development and readiness skills, including interviewing and resume building exercises. Our final project of the summer was to compete into teams and survey a city park, and they were to conduct a swap analysis. In this swap analysis, they're going to measure the strengths, the weaknesses, opportunities, and threats of the park. Each group had a thorough 10-minute presentation to a panel of judges, and I've attached the top presentations to that for you council members and leaders in our city, so that you can review. The presentation, we chose a winner that was selected, and I'd like to go on record to congratulate Justin Davis, Leandre Booker, Javier Jones, LaMarcus Morris, Chris Yarn, and Emilio Philpotts on your great presentation and recommendations for park improvements. I'd also like to recognize the runner-ups in this competition, Cameron Cooper, Bryson Clayton, Robert Curry, Bryce Morris, and Silas Johnson. These are our future leaders, the next generation of changers and community leaders. I'd like to briefly address the concerns that were brought up in the study. McKinney Vet's Memorial Park, which is located 20th Street, a park that's close to our area where our agency is located, and in the residential area, unity, community. We maintained that park for eight months, I mean, for eight weeks, I'm sorry. It's a gym in our community, which the potential has to do so much more. The restrooms are in dire need of repair, the playgrounds where the kids play is dirty, also has glass on the grounds, as well as weeds growing up underneath the sod. The shelters are in need of repair. Project Unity Leader Patricia Bowwire has done an exceptional job helping to maintain this park, but she needs help. So the youth were compelled in this research to cry out to the city for help, asking city residents that they.
Motion to extend the speaker's time for a minute and a half.
Second.
Any questions? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed.
It was a minute and a half?
Yeah.
Thank you. Okay, Mr. Allen.
Thank you, Councilwoman Flores. You were compelled to cry out for the city for help, asking that residents use the park and do what they can to clean up after themselves, volunteering and making the park better, and donating items to help with this improvement. Some of the main concerns that the kids said was after each week, after they cleaned up, each night or each day, this, the next, very next week, when they come back, the park would be in worse condition. And they also noticed that there were sometimes glass, there was a bloody shoe, or the knife that was on the grounds by the playground, I mean, not by the, by the playground area, that they had actually called the authorities to have it picked up, so that they wouldn't touch it themselves. But these are some of the things that they saw. Even though this park is in great condition, is being renovated, there are still things and concerns in which many of the residents and the Union Community and Neighborhood Association are concerned about, as well as children and parents who are playing at that park. So the youth see the potential of this park and the benefits of having a wonderful place to play, and they know how important it is that we need good parks in our neighborhood. This program changed their perspective on how they see parks and their city. It made them take a hard look at how we manage our resources and what's more important to improve the quality of people's lives. So CSC has been doing this with youth programming for over 30 years, and there's a place and a space for us to continue this work. We're grateful that Michigan DNR trusted us with $60,000 to operate this summer program. We've been thankful. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Abraham Allen.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, Council, and city manager and staff. I come before you this afternoon, this evening, to bring some awareness to downtown Saginaw Riverfront and the National Guard Armory building. And also, I'm a little bit frustrated concerning what I see downtown and the improvement, and maybe I'm just a little bit angry also on the progress that is happening. I did give you a pass out there that you probably have in front of you. The first thing that came up was the National Guard Army. I gave you a picture and a visual, because a lot of folks don't even know, the National Guard Army of Saginaw is located downtown on Water Street. My wife and I purchased the National Guard Army in 2000, and how this came about, one Sunday evening, we were sitting around, and we were discussing, and she was telling me about how good a time she used to have when she was a child. They used to look forward on Saturday, the weekend, to walk downtown, Jacobson and Shop, and stuff that nature. And right then, in 2000, everything seemed to be going away. So she asked me, she said, "Abraham," she said, "Why don't we do something?" And I'm like, huh? So she said, "Why don't we do something? Why step out of our comfort zone and just find us a building?" So I started shopping and looking around, and then I found the National Guard Armory, and it was really in really bad shape. So that was going on there. So the second page, "Enrich Our Community." This is something here that maybe you can give an insight on who we are. And I appreciate that you read it and go through it, and the National Guard Army, and then we created the Great Lakes Crossroad, was the first phase of the project, and we offered conference room services and professional offices and training and workshop that nature. I realize we managed not very long sitting there, so I'm just kind of talk fast, and there'll be some areas that I'll probably skip over, and you haven't, and then I probably won't finish a paragraph. But here, in the Saginaw future here, that they did give us recognition, actually, the only recognition that we have received concerned in developing the National Guard Armory. And Joanne Carey was the president that gave us this, and her staff, and that was in February of 2015, so. And then here, I gave you some history, interesting facts concerning the National Guard Armory. Great Lakes Crossroad, 234 South Water Street in Saginaw, and then the Saginaw, Michigan National Guard Armory, it appeared in the year of 2015. So you got a picture, a lot of folks didn't know that city auditorium was attached to the National Guard Army. So you go down through, you see the National Guard Armory building was built in 1909, the architect was William T. Cooper, and the builder was J. S. Kern and son, and that was in 1909. The cornerstone, wow, that is really fast.
Yeah. Motion to extend the speaker's time for a minute and a half.
A minute, and I have, thank you.
We gotta, we gotta have a second.
Just one minute, please. It's been moved to second, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed.
Okay, Mr. Allen.
Okay, thank you. And also want to mention that a lot of folks may not know, but downtown Saginaw had, in 1909, had the first riverfront park. Riverfront Park was there with the parking lot for AT&amp;T Park. It was the very first waterfront park, and the only park downtown, so. And I also want to mention that, let me skip through here right quick, and the building was vacated in 1982, and today Battery Park is just known as the river wall, and it's all grown up, and trees and so forth. And I didn't have a picture there for the National Guard Army. And here was that I want to mention about Battery Park and the 1909, the building was that here, where the site, where the army is now sitting, is where the first, of the Charles Wesley Grant, an architect, and he built the first, very first frame home on the east side of the river. He built the first frame home on the east side of the river, and that was in 1850. So I always say that he needs some recognition, so I'd like to get some plaits or something that y'all need some funding to look at that and to do that. So, but you have some chance to read through it, and just go through here, and then also here, where in, in January, the 26th of 66, I gave you a picture of the armory, of the soldiers and sailors, was on their way onto Bown, and they got detoured to the Mexican border, and a lot of them came back injured. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Our final speaker tonight is Victor Mancada. Mancada, thank you.
My name is Victor Mancada. Good evening, everybody. I own Discount Auto Body in Vic's Town in Saginaw, around 1316 East Genesee Avenue. I provided everybody, my father retired from the city, he worked here for over 20, 25 years. I just want to provide a pictures for everyone. The first picture with the numbers on it, that's the property around me, that's at the land bank I'm trying to acquire. The area in red is the property I already own, and the problem I'm having is I'm trying to clean everything up around me, over on the east side of Saginaw there. And, you know, I spoke with the land bank, and, you know, SNAP, and Sheldon Johnson, and Timothy Novak there at the county, they agreed to sell me everything. But the problem I'm having is with Robert Golin at the zoning department in Saginaw. Every time I get one step closer, he comes over and tries to give me another runaround and tell me what I can do, or why I can't expand. He says it's a junkyard, and it's not a junkyard, it's a body shop. You know, I don't know one shop that don't have a bunch of cars just sitting around until you're waiting for parts, or approval, or the insurance companies to either say they're going to fix them or total them, you know? So really, that's his biggest thing, is trying to say that the cars don't revolve in and out. But I mean, I've got pictures that go back as far as you want, with different cars there, new cars. You know, I have fixed car, I fixed the school buses for the city of Saginaw for its first group of America. Every school bus that has any damage, they bring it to me, I fix them. I fix multiple dealerships, Sarah Chevrolet, I work with Autobrave Used Cars, I did Butterfield's, I did Jones Auto, you know, I do a work for all those. You know, I also work with SCC, I was a teacher there in 2015, 2016, in the Saginaw Career Complex, where I taught the students, and after that, years, when I opened my own business up. And I, you know, I've got one student, that was my student there, that's been working with me and employed now. You know, it's been working for me for five years, so. And I'm just trying to clean the area up, really, and, you know, expand, and, you know, make it look nicer over there. So in the pictures, you know, at the end, you can see there's, you know, there was a house in the parking lot, we had that tore out, you know, had the parking lot fixed over, and then all the trees outside behind the shop, we cleared all that out, and then repaid, you know, we got that all leveled and graded, and I'm trying to do the same thing, you know, with everything around me that's at the land bank that I can. And it's just, you know, I'm just getting like in a roadblock every chance I get. You know, the first, he said the cars looked bad, so then I went and purchased a $7,000 banner, had it put across the whole front gate, now he's telling me my banner's too big. You know, so I just really don't know what's, what's my next step here. If I can get some help from the, if I can get some help from the city, and, you know, try to go over him or whatever, I'm not sure, you know, it's just, it is one thing after another. Then, you know, he came out today and requested invoices for every single car at my shop, and I'm, you know, I provided him with those. And then he's, oh, well, you know, if I do decide to sell it to you, well, you're going to have to put in new storm drains, and new, new catch basins, and you're going to have to do this, and I'm going to need site plans. I'm like, you know, every property you sell to somebody, do you require this? You know, I mean, you know, I'm just, you know, trying to, you know, clean up the area. I need more parking.
Motion to, yeah, extend the speaker's time for one minute.
Second.
It's been moved to second, eighty discussion. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed.
So, you know, I'm just kind of at a standstill, you know, and we're trying to expand the building, so I can hire more people. I know the teacher at the school, and we just, I got a lot of young people who get ahold of me, and I just don't have the space to really have anybody else there, and so that's the whole reason why I'm trying to expand, so I can help. You know, I taught, you know, and I went to SCC, and that's how I learned everything, you know, I ended up with $150,000 in scholarships from SCC, and that's what got me to where I'm at now. So, I just want to be able to help, give back. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. I want to take a moment, so we're going to do a mayor's thing now. And we have some young people on the back row. Mr. Coleman talked about the DNR program. We've got, this is our second set of students from the community, who have all summer long been going to different parks, and throughout our city, cleaning up. And I just wanted them to be acknowledged. I also have another individual, a young man, who is not with their, with their program, but I met him, I met him at a birthday party, and he was really curious about what city council did. So his dad brought him tonight, and I want to thank him for bringing him. So I did a mayor thing, so I apologize. Madam Clerk.
Your remarks of council.
Councilmembers, you have three minutes. You have three minutes to discuss. Please get your points in as well, and we will start tonight with Councilman Flores.
Thank you, Mayor. I don't have too much tonight, to be honest. I'm supposed to be down in South Carolina in like 10 hours, so it's going to be a long ride. But it's great to see everybody, it's really nice to know that the Mayor Pro temp is feeling better. I had spoken with him when he had COVID, so it's great to see him here. You're welcome. And then also, when it comes to the public comments, I think there's probably not a better example than what has been talked about tonight when it comes to public comments. I think everybody's going to be able to get an answer from the city about what their concerns are, when it comes to speed bumps, or when it comes to being able to expand business. That's really what we're looking for. We want to hear that, and we want to make sure that you have the space and the availability to talk about what's important, right? Because we're all a community together, we're a city, and we want to move forward together as much as we can. When you do get that update, please make sure to give me a call, 989-992-3803. Little Miss, over there? Good to see you. And I think that's it for me. Everybody, I hope it was a good summer, and I look forward to seeing you guys soon and hearing back from you. Thanks.
Next, we have Councilman Copeland.
Good evening, everyone. Welcome to our meeting this evening. I first want to start off by saying happy birthday to one of the city's centurion. Happy 101st birthday to Dr. Louis Bishop, who is celebrating today, August 15. I do also want to welcome our First Ward Community Youth Center, our young people that are here, great, thank you for coming this, after this evening, getting a chance to talk to you all, looking forward to great things, especially my undecided student who may want to come on over to Saginaw Valley. Also, thank you to all of our guest speakers, all of our guest speakers, thank you for coming and sharing in a safe space, in a safe space. I think we all need safe spaces. Safe spaces are very important. So thank you for coming and considering City Hall as a safe space for you as a citizen. Um, so thank you for coming and considering City Hall as a safe space for you as a citizen. Debbie, I would like to talk to you after, um, our meeting about those signs. I do have an answer for you about that. Um, if, so I'll be happy to, uh, talk to you about that. Um, and I also wanted to say, great job to the, um, African, the Saginaw African Arts Festival this weekend. Um, you just, sometimes you just need your cup filled and just seeing people laughing, smiling, dancing, it just does it for you. And it was three busy days and I kept my word, I did the five K on Saturday, um, and I'm still hurting, uh, so, lesson learned, I need to get new shoes, so. Um, but it was a great opportunity. It was something, um, that I had a chance to just, I didn't realize you were supposed to run in like the fastest time, so I was walking and talking to everybody. So I totally apparently missed the whole goal of you gotta beat your time. So, but it was a great opportunity just to be there and talk to citizens and to walk by the water early in the morning. Um, and I encourage everyone, really take part in the beauty of the city. If you have some free time, just go find a spot and walk. Um, if you can get on the river, just walk, find some water and walk. It's getting cold now, so I don't know how long we have our heat, so please get out, exercise, spend some time with your family. Again, thank you for being here. Um, I truly believe, I didn't just was saying it jokingly in the prayer, I really do believe we're on to great things for the city of Saginaw. So the big thing I always say is just hold on to hope, keep the faith. We are moving forward, it may not be as fast as we want, but we are determined and we are consistent and intentional about the growth that we will see in our city. Don't lose faith. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we have Councilwoman Gilley.
Thank you so much, Mayor.
Uh, good evening, everyone. Uh, first of all, I'd like to say thank you to everyone, uh, that decided to come to the city council meeting today to observe and/or to speak to council. Uh, I did listen to all of our speakers today and it takes, sometime it take me a minute, I'm a little older, I'm very familiar with the Armory, I've been there several times, but it just took a minute for, for me to recognize. But, uh, I would also like to say, uh, my condolences, uh, go out and I know many people here, I've heard of the passing of Minister Anthony Dent, and I'd like to send my condolences, uh, to that family. Uh, the awesome, awesome pillar in our community is not many people that didn't know, uh, Minister Anthony Dent, so my condolences go out to the family and different people that he touched, definitely. He's been in our community so very long. Um, also, uh, I'm having a, uh, and a function called Let the Youth Speak along with our, uh, Chief of Police. We're gonna combine that with the, uh, front porch roll call and, um, we're going to be letting the youth, uh, centered around the youth in, in the city of Saginaw. You know, what they wanna, uh, say to the city of Saginaw. We have some young people giving their testimonies, we have some young people wanna say, you know, what they appreciate, uh, what they like to see, what they don't like to see. So, uh, we're gonna be having gift cards and raffles and, um, Chief Ruth, uh, has several different agencies that are gonna be there. The city police is hiring, um, we have the FBI, we, and, um, couple other people, Fire Department, I can't name them all, but, um, it's, it's gonna be great, it's gonna be great. If I'm not mistaken, I believe the sheriffs are gonna have the horses out there, I believe, so we're gonna cross our fingers on that one, maybe, maybe not. But, uh, anyway, um, CAC is actually having a Saginaw Faith-Based Fatherhood, uh, Connection and it's for fathers and it's for underemployed, unem, uh, underemployed, unemployed, seven five three seven seven four one, extension two two two. Also, uh, young man Timothy, uh, excuse me, Timothy Clark, uh, is hiring young, he's looking for young people, but he's hiring in general and he's remodeling, uh, and he is hiring, his number is nine eight nine, two one three, one zero five nine. And I think, also, uh, North Charter Academy is having a function, uh, August the twentieth, one to five P M., two three three two, Chartner Drive in Saginaw. Ooh, thank you very mu, oh, job fair, I'm sorry, one more thing, job fair, Mexican-American council. Thank you.
Next, we have Councilwoman Bench, you see, when we don't get our timing, we just pass.
We won't subject you to more of us.
Thank you.
Uh, as my colleague was saying, there's a job fair at the Mexican-American Council, August twenty-sixth, eleven A M. to three P M. Um, and it looks like there's, uh, activities. I don't know if you wanted all that covered, but there are some job fair boot camps as well, but, um, and yes, thank you, um, good evening to everyone. Um, I will start, I guess, with my public speaker's list. Uh, congratulations on your candidacy and thank you for your willingness to serve, Mr. Clark. Um, I happen to live not directly in Ms. Malconian's neighborhood, um, but I can, I will co-sign and corroborate everything, um, that she is saying as far as, I know it's not an exclusive issue to that neighborhood, but I know that the little crotch rockets are coming from my neighborhood, like right in my little loop, so if you need an address, I got you. Um, I can walk you right over, uh, we know where they're coming from and it is, it is dangerous. Um, I know that there had been some talks about some movable speed bumps and I'm not really sure what happened with that conversation, but I, I know that Adams Boulevard is not the only place in town, people have got to slow down, people are just whipping around like crazy and now you've got these real young kids who are probably not even licensed flying around on, on these little motorbikes and, um, it's not as bad on my little stretch, but I see what, where they go whipping down and it's, it's, it's an accident waiting to happen, I'm sure. Um, Mr. Allen, your indigo venue is just such a fantastic, uh, venue and I am so sorry that you feel like you are overlooked in that area downtown because you are exactly what we need in that, that area, um, it's a fantastic venue. If you're looking to have a party, any of those things, you know, seek him out because it is, it is a wonderful venue. Uh, the pictures don't do it justice, I mean, it is an amazing place. Um, oh, let me see, um, I have a couple other things, I know that for once, but, um, I do wanna thank our clerk's office, um, and our, uh, staff and all of the election workers. Uh, we had a primary election back on the second. And, um, the, the, uh, they always do a fantastic job and obviously with the scrutiny that our elections have come under, um, just knowing that we're, we have election employees who are so thoroughly trained and, um, I was at a new precinct or precinct that was new to me this year and, um, I could not have asked for a better group of people. Um, they were, all knew what they were doing and that's all the result of the hard work that our clerk's office puts in every single year to make sure that we. Um, and that reminds me, make sure you guys in the back room, my First Ward students, please get yourselves registered to vote and consider volunteering to get paid, um, at our, our next election. We are always looking for election workers, you gotta do it enough in advance so they know that you're, you're an approved person, but you can be sixteen and seventeen years old and work and it's quite a nice stipend for the, for the work that you do that day. And then I think last, I just, I too want to, um, just commend and give my praise to, um, the organizers of the fifty-fourth Annual African Cultural Festival, it was amazing.
Next, we have Councilwoman Shergen.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Uh, good evening to everyone here, uh, and thank you to our public speakers for bringing, uh, forth your concerns and/or, uh, your great news on your summer youth program. We always love to hear from our constituents and value what you have to say. I, Mayor, fellow council members, I was in attendance to the Fifty-fourth Annual African Cultural Festival. Between the culture, the sounds, the food, the fellowship, it was absolutely wonderful. I heard I missed and Mayor, I came right after she was there and as well as Councilwoman Bench, but Councilman Balls was there during the time. Spent way too much money and ate too much, however, it's always worth it. Um, so hats off to the committee, the volunteers, the family, the supporters, it takes a village and it definitely was a huge success. Looking forward to the fifty-fifth next year, so I know it's gonna be great and probably, something special in store. Uh, just wanna remind everyone that September tenth, Hilton Jones is having their open house from eleven A M. to four P M. and that's seventeen oh eight Johnson Street. Uh, and, uh, I had the very honor and privilege to celebrate, uh, Battalion Chief Jim Foreman's retirement yesterday. Very emotional, but it was great to see current and former firefighters in attendance, so, uh, Jim was a great individual. He's got, there's some shoes to fill at the fire department, sorry, rains, good luck. But, uh, congratulations to, uh, Battalion Chief Foreman on the. That's all I have.
Thank you. Next, we have Councilwoman Oster.
Thanks, Mayor, welcome, everybody, and I, I, right off the bat, I wanna say thank you for all the students coming out tonight, uh, from, from First Ward, it was, uh, fun to talk to yous and we had a good time, so thanks again for attending our meeting. Uh, quite a bit to go down through here, so Alex, good luck in the campaign and also you talked about Delta College, I talked about the MI Reconnect Program, so if you don't have a degree, you're twenty-five years old, free schooling, uh, free college through the state of Michigan along with trade programs and the governor has put about one hundred thousand students into that program now. Debbie, I hear your pain, I live on Hoyt Avenue, I have minibikes and race cars and, uh, motorcycles and we sit there and we, and so I'm hoping that, uh, I'm looking forward to some, maybe some of the feedback from our staff on that as well, so thanks for coming out and talking to us. Uh, Mr. Coleman, thank you, CAC and everything that you always do for this city, it's just phenomenal programs that you guys do over there in this park, it was really interesting to hear about that tonight, so I look forward to looking through your packet later. Mr. Allen, we spoke before the meeting, um, I used to be on the Historic District Commission, so for my fellow colleagues, the Armory is a single entity local historic district. So if you didn't know that, uh, it is protected under local ordinance and, uh, it's one of, thanks, so thanks for coming out and I look forward to reading through your packet as well, already had a chance to kinda peek at it, so. Um, Victor, I live right on Hoyt Avenue next to the school, so you're right in my neighborhood, so thank you for trying to make it, uh, in that GNC corridor, just a little bit nicer looking, so I'm, I'm looking forward to what our staff will come back on that, cause some things are kind of already going through my mind because I do sit on the planning commission. Uh, some announcements I do wanna make, Bridge the Gap is gonna be doing their twenty-twenty-two feet tour. Uh, this is gonna be August twenty-eighth from one to four, this is gonna be at the Dow Pavilion over at three hundred Johnson Street. Uh, they've got a lot of vendors and, and food, food vendors involved in that, so if you're interested, please attend. Um, also, congratulations, my colleague said, Jim Foreman, on your retirement, it was really a, a great, um, celebration yesterday and it was really good to see all of our firefighters that had provided all this service to the city over these years. Also, one of our local residents here, uh, Kevin Jones, he's in the city of Saginaw, he has, Kevin Jones is the founder of Black Teaking, you might have seen his art exhibits around the city. I do wanna congratulate Kevin, cause he was appointed by Governor Whitmer to represent the black leadership and the arts and culture and his term will expire in December of twenty-twenty-three, so congratulations, Kevin. I've been recently getting the chance to know him more and he's just a great asset in some of the things that he's doing in the city. Also, the Great mural project, you're seeing all the, um, boxes being painted up in, around the city, so it's really interesting to, uh, drive around the city and just see everything that all the artists are doing, so thank you, Great mural project, thank you to all the artists who are taking the time, uh, to do this as well. Uh, I had an opportunity and had an invite from the Stars Bus System, uh, we did a lunch at the Urban Bistro, it was fantastic, so again, it was, thank you for that invitation, it was a chance to sit together and talk with Stars and just hear about some of the trials, tribulations and things that they are trying to do in the city. Too much, I've got more. Thank you, thank you.
It's a mouthful, but we try to be respectful of your time. Next, we have Mayor Pro Temp Balls.
Well, good evening, everybody, I'd like to thank everybody for coming out to the city council this evening, especially the, uh, students from the First Ward Community Center, my old stomping grounds, I was, uh, a First Ward Community Center kid myself, starting off at seven, eight years old, and it's good to see you guys here and learning about how the city council operate. Um, I'm gonna piggyback on Ms. Lamarr's on this job fair. Uh, the first, uh, the first day for the job fair is August the seventeenth, the New Birth Missionary Baptist Church, August the eighteenth. Okay, it's a job camp, boot camp, thank you. And it's, uh, August the eighteenth, the Saint Joe's Parish, August the nineteenth, the New Beginning Ministries. So anybody, no, anybody looking for a job, please show up because there's a lot of jobs available in the city of Saginaw, we just gotta apply for them. Mr. Allen, I wanna thank you too for all the work that you have invested in the city of Saginaw, uh, thank you so much and keep up the good work. Uh, Mr. Moncada, I wanna thank you too for the amount of money that you invest in the city of Saginaw and not only that, here's a guy that was a teacher at the, uh, Career Opportunity Center and now he's employing people in the city of Saginaw, so we gotta tip our hat to him and help him out any way possible, so we can get more people employed in here in the city of Saginaw, thank you so much. And, uh, the city will definitely be getting back to you, giving you a letter, letting you know what you should be doing or can do to, uh, make sure that your business expands. Uh, you know, I, I can't see why you can have any issues and that place has been sitting there for years, uh, you tore down that Raggedy House, you doing good things in the neighborhood to try to make it improving and, and at least you doing something positive and I wanna thank you for that. And Mr. Coleman, I'd like to thank you too for the work that you guys are doing in the CAC and, and the parks, man, that's a beautiful thing that you guys did, man, I wanna thank you so much for your, uh, contributions to the city of Saginaw, keep up the good work. Um, I too attended the African-American Council this weekend. Uh, I always attended the oldest African-American, uh, festival in the country. Fifty-four years they celebrated this year and it was a beautiful event. I had the opportunity to take my great granddaughters there and they had a ball, uh, they visited the African village, they want, everywhere they stopped, they wanted me to take a picture. So they was climbing on the, uh, the, the new murals, they was climbing on other stuff, said, take my picture, Papa, take my picture. We had a lovely time, man, I, I had the opportunity to, uh, put on my African gear and I even played the, uh, drums there, I got a drum at the house and I brought it and I beat that thing, we had a nice tune, didn't we? I thought we did pretty good. I can tell you one thing, my finger swolled up today, so I must've did a good job, so. But we had a good time at that and the, uh, Representative, uh, Kilde showed up and even played the drums for us too. So we had a great time, uh, keep up the good mo, work, Mr. Brown, I appreciate you guys, what you do at the First Ward Community Center and for the African-American Council. Uh, it's people like you that make Saginaw what it is today and I thank you all again, thank you.
Last but not least, is me. First, I'd like to say, as I always say, Saginaw is poised for a comeback. Mr. Abraham, hold on, help is on the way. We are going in a new direction in this city and we just gotta have a little faith. We always want it right now, it's not gonna happen right now. My public speakers, I thank you, I thank you. I don't know what else to tell you. Can we make a difference? Yeah, we can together, but if we work together, we can make a whole lot of differences. Young people cleaning up yards, grown pe, people, we need to start helping, okay? I don't ask you to do anything that I won't do. Um, it's been a busy, 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 busy weekend for me as always. Um, sometimes I look and I say, when do you sleep? And I'm trying to figure it out, when do I sleep? But I want you to understand, when you have a love for something, you do what you have to do to make it work. And if you don't understand me, understand this, it's a new season, it's a new day. Fresh anointing is coming our way, the spirit of power and prosperity, we're taking our city back. We are no longer gonna be shackled and we are no longer going to be afraid to speak how we want, but we gonna work together and do it. On the twenty-first, me along with some business people in the community, at the Saginaw County Jail, if you got a warrant, please don't come over there. We are giving away book bags, so I don't want nobody to say she was giving out book bags and I got arrested, so. For the children. We have, we're looking at over five hundred book bags. And we do this every year, along with Charlie Patton-Wyvis, Mike Gomez, myself and Sheldon Matthews, our county commissioner, and I need you to understand, it's the love for the city and the people that we serve. I'm a servant, I didn't come for you to serve me, I came to serve you. And I think that when people get that in their heads, they'll understand why I'm so passionate about what I do. The staff is phenomenal at the city of Saginaw. And if you think I'm telling the story, all you gotta do is go outside and look around. We're making improvements, not as fast as you'd like to see them, but Saginaw is making some changes. So I'm encouraging everyone, I told my young people earlier, come volunteer, thank you so much, Madam Clerk.
We are now at reports from the city manager.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
I also wanna thank our city clerk, Janis Santos, our deputy clerk, Chris Oldman and the clerks. I also want to thank our City Clerk Janis Santos, our Deputy Clerk Chris Oldman, and the Clerk's Office staff, and all of our election workers for their hard work on the August 2nd primary election. A lot of people think that that work is just done on Election Day, but especially with all the changes in the laws over the last few years, it's election season for them. So they do take a lot of time prior to the election. New registrations, voting in person, absentee, and so on. So they put a lot of work into it. And as Councilman Bench said, we always need additional election workers. So if you know anybody who's willing to do that, if you're willing to do that, see the Clerk's Office to sign up. They have great training programs. They're working with Saginaw County to do that as well. So plenty of positions open for that. The Government Finance Officers Association has awarded the Certificate of Achievement for Excellence in Financial Reporting to the city of Saginaw for its annual comprehensive financial report for fiscal year ended June 30th, 2021. The report has been judged by an impartial panel to meet the high standards of the program, which includes demonstrated constructive spirit of full disclosure to clearly communicate its financial story and motivate potential users and user groups to read the report. Their certificate of achievement is the highest form of recognition in the area of governmental accounting and financial reporting, and its attainment represents a significant accomplishment by government and its management. We've received this award every year since fiscal year 2009. Prior to that, we hadn't received it for several years. So congratulations to Finance Director Lori Brown and her team for putting all that together, and with support from technical services and other departments. So good job by them. And finally, I just wanted to comment on what you have probably seen on the news and in the paper. Congressman Kilde was in town last week. He didn't make a lot of stops, but he was on the riverfront to highlight an investment by the federal government in our downtown riverfront of $3 million. The money will allow the city of Saginaw to make infrastructure investments. The riverfront for economic development in the area of AT&amp;T through down toward the Lee Mansion. As of last week, the funds had passed the U.S. House Budget Committee, and thank you to Congressman Kilde for his support and assistance. That was, the city did put in that request. We had assistance from Saginaw Future, and Congressman's office was very helpful in contacting us. I did send council an update when they were asking for those proposals, and this is actually more than what we had requested for that project. As you know, we put in multiple requests for this specific project. I think we were at about $3 or $4 million. So this will allow us to do even a little bit more, unless inflation has caused it to cost that much.
It's supposed to be going down.
This is a, if you go down there, Mayor came out, and I think they picked a good spot on the riverfront for that announcement, because if you looked behind him, was a huge power line and transformer. And I did talk to Abraham Allen, Mr. Abraham Allen, about that after a riverfront. So further with Mr. Allen, he's served the city for a long time as well besides this development. He's been on the Riverfront Commission for several years, and he was on the DDA prior to that for several years, until I think putting in that much time got to be a bit much, but he's still serving on our Riverfront Commission. Riverfront Commission, we talked about going all the way back to our 2013 charat. If several of you might remember participated in that, we did have that at Mr. Allen's building. And what we would like to do and have this be a first step to promote that development on the riverfront, walkability was one of the main things that was mentioned in that charat program all the way back in 2013, and it still applies today. You all know that we have a difficult time with walkability on Washington Downtown because of all that traffic. That is a gold truck route, which is, I think, a U.S. designation, a federal designation. It's very difficult. But Abraham and I did talk after the meeting about, let's try to make our walkability face that riverfront, which is, Councilman Copeland had mentioned that. But we turn Water Street into that portion and make it go from the SVRC that's already been developed, Mr. Allen's building that's developed. And then after that, we have a lot of vacancy after AT&amp;T till you get to the Lee Mansion and further down. So I'd like to see it linked all the way to City Hall. It'd be great improvement on our riverfront and improve the riverwalk. So hopefully, this will be a first step to that, and we can get more down there and try to fulfill that. I know it's a long, it's a long process, a long and arduous process, like the mayor mentioned, but I think we are making steps, and hopefully, this will spur that as well. We can get it all the way, all the way through and signed by the president. And that concludes the management update.
Do we have any questions for our City Manager?
I just had one. You want to go first?
Go ahead.
Just for the $3 billion from Congressman Kilde, and it does pay to get somebody on the Ways and Means Committee in our district. But, so that's just infrastructure for the walkway or for other?
So what, the project that we put in was to bury the power lines.
Okay.
So, so it's similar. I believe we had a project like that when we put in the S, not the SVRC, the medical building and the building that Garber's in, if you recall, what that area used to be, old and abandoned houses as well. We had to do that site to prepare those areas for development. So that would be our first step. We do have a lot more in there. We put in an EDC grant previous to that, and we had C-Wall and other things like that that were included, that would be some additional needed infrastructure. Ultimately, what I would like to see is, and I think Mr. Carwatt does have this in his long-term plan as well, but resurfacing for the riverfront walkway. And also lighting on the riverfront walkway, C-Wall, other various things to help spur development. This is a first step. We'll keep asking for additional funding. We'll try to do more. We do have a, there's a subgroup on the Riverfront Commission that has a riverfront gateway. They did submit that to ARPA. It's a relatively small project. It gets about $200,000, but it would go toward, similar to what Mr. Allen was talking about, where it used to have that park atmosphere there. Somewhat overgrown now. We don't have as much seating. We don't have that entryway to start that riverfront. So there are plans there. It's just allocating the funding to it, receiving and allocating that funding.
All right. Thank you.
Yes, Councilwoman.
Question answered.
It's answered.
Yes, thank you.
Yeah.
Quick question too, and thanks for all the great information. So from what I'm hearing is like the Congressman Kilde is working, is just for the lines, because before that EDA grant was for the C-Wall, so that would, that's not included with what the congressman is trying to get for us?
That's right. Yep.
Okay.
The ED, the Economic Development Grant was a different source. We had to submit them at the same time, or maybe it was a month, somewhere in that range between the two. So we did submit two different projects. The Economic Development Grant for the C-Wall, we did get turned down for that.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, I just, that's kind of what I was hearing. I just wanted to clarify that too. So and I don't know if Congressman Kilde is listening, but thank you. Thank you for believing in our city and trying to get that money for us. I did have the opportunity to see him this weekend at the festival, so. But thanks, Tim.
So what's the plans for that hole where they tore that thing down right next to the bridge? When they gonna cover that up or fill it up or whatever?
Yeah, we'll touch base with the property owner again. There were issues with that regarding the EQ they were working with. It goes into the river overflow, you know, various cuts like that. So when I meet with Saginaw Future next, I'll ask them to contact that property owner again.
I think Saginaw Future's here, maybe.
Any more questions? Thank you so much. Once again, I keep telling y'all, there's more money acoming. We just got to be shovel-ready. We got to be shovel-ready. We've got to be ready for the change. And if we're not ready, the time is now. So we got to get ready. If we not ready, we need to get ready. Thank you so much. Yes, I'm sorry.
No, you're good. I just, I just thought about something too. This whole project, and just for the people that are listening, for the people in the audience, that Bay City kind of had the same situation before they started their riverfront development. Developers are looking for property where these items are taken care of, so that they can come in and that they can do the development afterwards. So just wanted to make that quick note. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay. Madam Clerk.
Mayor, your next item is the Consent Agenda.
The agenda has been available at City Hall and on the city webpage and on SGTV, Channel 191. I need a motion to approve the agenda, leaving room for exceptions.
So moved.
It's been moved in second. Do we have any exceptions?
Just for number seven.
Do we have any more exceptions to the rule? It's been moved in second, and we have one concern. I need to take a motion. I need to take a vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. Madam Clerk.
Item number seven is to approve the blanket purchases with specified vendors for a total amount of $443,000 for vehicle parts and supplies for the Public Service Department Garage Operations Division. Councilmember Flores.
Thank you. Hey, Phil.
Hey, how are you?
Well, how are you?
Good.
Cool. So it's 22 vendors total. And everything's over $2,000. That's just for the whole fiscal year from now until 2023?
Correct.
And that just gives you more flexibility to be able to do what you need to before coming to council?
Yes. What happens is, you know, with our fleet and the size of our fleet and the tens of dozens of different types of fleet, what we do is we track the purchases we make every year on spreadsheets and what department pays for it. And we got, and these are the vendors that we use based on the type of equipment, who manufactured it. Some of them are solosaurus. We price quote between vendors, but to make it more efficient, we know we have to buy the parts. So we just set blankets up based on like a five-year average with each vendor, but we don't know what's going to fail or break throughout the year. So you can't really plan for, you know. So this is, we do tracking, do our best to set up what our average costs to each vendor have been throughout the last fiscal years. And then when we need certain parts in that from them, we call them up, price quote, and then we can purchase it through this blanket process versus an individual. We do thousands of purchases.
Yeah, because that's what I, I guess I've seen a trend of doing blanket purchases, having council okay it.
Yep.
Versus when I first got here, it was thing by thing by thing. And you and I had had a conversation probably last year or the year before about needing to come here every time. So really, what I see, you know, I was going to do six and seven, but I think seven is just kind of...
The same thing. It's just one's repair services and one's the parts.
Yep, with 12 and one's with 22. But just the overall, you know, this is kind of the trend, what I'm seeing. And I'm cool with it, but I'm just saying for the public to know that this is what we're doing now. So yeah. All right. Well, thank you so much.
Thank you.
That's all I had.
I need a motion.
So moved.
Support.
It's been moved in support. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. Madam Clerk.
Mayor, we are now at Boards Commission Committee Reports.
Do we have any reports by any of the council persons? Yes, ma'am.
All right. For Saginaw Economic Development Corporation, just a reminder that August 25th is the Small Business Expo 2022. It's a free event at Morley Plaza, 4:00 to 8:00 p.m. And then also want to remind anyone who's interested that every third, is it third Wednesday of the month? So the next one is this Wednesday, SEDC holds a Small Business Networking Mixer. So if you are interested for business networking, come on out. It's at the CMU RC at the SVRC Marketplace, always at 5:00 p.m. Third Wednesday of the month.
Is there anyone else? Yes.
Yep. Thanks, Mayor. Just for the public that's watching, and for people that are here, the Planning Commission will be meeting next week, August 23rd, at 6:00 p.m. right here in council chambers. Right now, the master plan is open for public comment, and that master plan is available at City Hall and also on our city website. One other announcement for boards, it's not a city board, but it's the board that I sit on, and I think this is very important for me to make an announcement and some information on. So there is a new virus that surfaced in the area. I am on the Board of Directors for Great Lakes Bay Pride. I want to thank the organization for getting out in front of this, because viruses don't care who you are. They just need a host. And it's just a matter of time before that virus starts to come into the community. So we have partnered with the Bay County Health Department. We have partnered with Central Michigan Health Department, Midland, and also the Saginaw County Health Department. We are also partnered with Mahia, which is a state organization. And if you want any information on this, feel free to get ahold of me. I can get you the information that you need. Also, watch their Facebook page, because as we get more information, we are putting that out there for the public and also including vaccines, hopefully when they're available, for people that want them. So thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Yes.
I just want to real quick announce that the City-City County School Liaison Committee meets this Thursday, August 18th, at 5:30 p.m. We will be meeting at the Board of Education Building. So anybody who has concerns or ideas that overlap all three entities, that's the place to bring them. Or if you have kids and you just have concerns, and it's easier to make, you can certainly come too. I do want to add, I will be with you in spirit, but I will be at my committee meeting instead of your. But I wish you the best. And that's all I wanted to say. Thank you.
Anyone else? Yes.
I sent a question for the attorney. So is there any update from the Elliot Larson ruling from the Michigan Supreme Court?
Yeah, that opinion came out.
Was that miscellaneous or no? I'm sorry.
I mean, it really should be under miscellaneous.
All right. I'll wait for that then.
Yeah, I was gonna say, we wait and have this do a miscellaneous.
Just too antsy.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Anybody else? Okay. Madam Clerk.
Your next order of business is resolutions. We have one tonight. And it's Amending Supplemental Resolution Authorizing Issuance of Water Supply System Revenue and Revenue Refunding Bonds, Series 2022.
I need a motion to adopt.
So moved.
It's been moved in second. All those, I'm sorry. Any questions? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. Madam Clerk.
Next is miscellaneous business.
Do we have any miscellaneous business now?
All right, thank you. Same question, different point in the agenda.
Yes, I would have sent an update out to council on July 29th, the day after the opinion from the Supreme Court. But that opinion, the Supreme Court held that sexual preference is protected under Elliot Larson in terms of gender. So gender identity was already protected by an earlier court ruling. And the Supreme Court, I'm sorry, sexual orientation is protected under Elliot Larson. With that ruling, they're both protected under the State Civil Rights Act.
All right, thank you. So would we be able to draft an ordinance now that it's?
There wouldn't be a necessity for us to draft an ordinance, because it's protected under state law.
But because what we've, you know, what my concern is, is even Roe v. Wade, right, being overturned due to the standards and the judicial system, that we would want to do it now because it is legally protected, and then create an ordinance, so we wouldn't have to come back and revisit it. If, you know, perhaps there would be a different court that would rule differently under that.
Well, the Michigan Supreme Court is the last stop for decisions on Michigan law.
But do you see what I'm saying? Like even with abortion rights?
No.
Where there was a difference, that it wasn't codified, and that people, or, you know, the Congress did not take the opportunity during that time to codify it. And now we're kind of, especially in Michigan, where we have kind of archaic laws that are going back to, I think it's 1913. But would that be a possibility? That's all I'm asking.
That's a policy decision for the council to make.
That, okay. Well, thank you.
Any other questions? Any other miscellaneous? Hearing none.
No, I do.
I'm sorry.
Madam Mayor, sorry.
Yes.
Um, I should have asked during the management update. However, there is a narrative going around about Ojibwe Island, and I just want to know if you can provide a...
if you can provide an update on, at the next council meeting or even now, I don't want to put you under the gun or spotlight. But I think there's a lot of talk about the community wanting Ojibwe back open. I know we have sectioned it off. We were gonna install some cameras. And I, I just feel that it may be time for a conversation about what is the plans if Ojibwe is going to open back up, if there's gonna be some project updates. Because the narrative that is being displayed is, I know is not true. So I just want to make sure we have that conversation and bring it back up. So we, as a council, is updated, but also a community.
Yeah, Ojibwe Island is open. It's open, and, I mean, I take my dog there on frequent Sundays, and it is being used by several people. If you go there, you will see people, kids learning how to ride bikes, people having picnics. There is a lot of activity there, particularly on win, on weekends. So I, I always say it's, it's inaccurate to say it's not open, it's open, it's not open for vehicle access daily. So it is, it would be open to vehicle access for special events even currently. There are a lot of needs on the island, and we do, we do have the cameras and they do function. Fortunately, we have not had any incidents that I'm aware of where we had, we've had to access them, which is a good thing. There is a need for shoreline restoration. That's one of significant projects. There is a need for, and I guess I didn't know the, the signif- how significant of a need it was till I got an update this week for repairs on the stage, which is something that we may be able to have some outside partners help us with. There is a need for repairs to the roadway, especially if you want to have it open to frequent vehicle traffic. I guess if you go and walk that, you'll see what kind of shape it's in. Mr. Carwatt could tell you in more detail, but it, it was not, that roadway was not constructed for daily traffic. It doesn't have drainage, and the, the way the road construction was done, it's a park drive. It's not meant for those things. So I think there is, there are significant amounts of work that need to be done. I can tell you, prior to the closure to vehicle traffic, we did have a lot of criminal and noise complaints from the island. Since the vehicle closure, it's been pretty limited. I, I don't think that we received any noise complaints since that time from the residents in Old Town. Typically, that's, that's who was contacting the manager's office, was residents in Old Town. I did ask Chief Ruth for a rapport of 911 calls from the island, so I did just get that. It goes back a number of years. It's about nine pages, so I'm reviewing that right now as well. So I could probably send a summary of those calls to council too. So you, you can see the, the call volume and what it's changed, what it's changed to in the last year or so. But, yeah, I can provide that to you.
Yes.
Thank you. I guess I'll have to piggyback on that, because I've heard several concerns, many concerns by many people in regards to Ojibwe. And it's not, when is it gonna reopen? When is it gonna reopen to vehicle traffic? And I hear what you're saying now. So maybe the conversation can start with individuals that are concerned about taking away what seems to appear, appear to be the taking away of vehicle traffic through Ojibwe Island for many, 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 many years. That is something that I would just have to say, the community of color utilized Ojibwe Island for many years. Anyplace you go, any park you probably in the city has and do have crime. So we need that conversation. And from the constituents that I've spoken to in Saginaw, they are tired of it not being open to vehicle traffic. And this is including pastors in the city, because that was just something that the city done. It was, it's just something that we did for 30, 40 years. And it, the city feels like, the community feels like that that was just snatched away from them. So if explanation can be put in there, they thought when we voted to get the cameras on Ojibwe Island, that that would change a lot of the narrative in regards to certain things that may and may not have gone on at the island. So that would be something definitely that I'm looking forward to having that conversation also. Thank you.
Mr. City Manager, I guess, just like we have Friends of Hoy Park, I, I hear people always talk about Ojibwe. Why don't we start a Friend of Ojibwe? Why don't we do some stuff ourselves? The hardest part for us up here, all nine of us, is trying to please everybody. We're not gonna do that. But if you've got some ideas, why not get together, find out how to do a, like Friends of Hoy, I mean, Friends of Hoy Park, they raise money. Maybe then we can figure out how we can reopen it back up, if it's to be opened back up. But I just heard our city manager say, the road is not equipped. The, the roadway is deteriorating. I don't know if you've been out to Ojibwe, but I have. And, and it is, you know, it, it used to be a fun thing for me, but I would be sort of afraid to do a whole lot right now on that island because we not maintained it. And so now, and we develop a group of individuals who always have a lot to say. Put your money where your mouth is. Come on in. Come on in. I'm willing to sit down, and I'm sure any of the other council people will, and we can try to develop something to move it forward. But for right now, I'm sorry. The park is open, and the whole issue was on the Dickie Hill Show, the Gospel Fest. That's how this all started. No, the stage is corroded, and it is falling apart. And if somebody dance on it, you know, like we like dancing, I know I do. And if you dance in the wrong spot, you're gonna fall.
Mayor, I, I think we need to stop because miscellaneous business is for business emotions. I believe the manager responded that he would get you all that report, so any further discussion than that can go through the city.
That's fine.
Thank you.
I need a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.